Hello everybody and welcome to my channel. Reiki with Anna. Today's video is sponsored by Blinkist. Offering the best insights from over 3,000 non-fiction books, condensing them into 15 minutes that you can read or listen to podcast style. Like the Book of Joy. Along with the other 14 million users, you will have access to all these titles while offline. They also have full-length audiobooks and premium subscribers get up to 65% off the retail price. The first 100 people to click on the link below will get unlimited access for the first week and then 25% off if you want a full membership. Check it out. For today's video, we are going to be focusing on ease and flow. We're taking it kind of back to basics here. This is a session that I've wanted to do for a little bit because a few of you have requested it. But on top of that, I had a conversation with one of you the other day about that sense of heaviness that we sometimes associate with this spiritual path. And this individual was sharing that they were kind of craving lightness and a sense of ease. And I thought, yeah, I'm sure a lot of people crave that. I've been craving that. I mean, I don't know if you can tell. I look a little bit different. I hacked off my hair and lightened it. And I just have been wanting, like hungry for some shifts, hungry for some change, hungry for a little bit of lightness, removing some of that heaviness. Because I don't know about a lot of you. I mean, I know about a lot of you because you're so generous and you share. But it's been so heavy. It's been such a heavy year and globally, it's been such a heavy year. On an individual level, it's been such a heavy year. And so, you know, right now, things are really heavy where I am. I'm pretty close to one of those wildfires. And it just, everything feels so heavy and ominous. And I just wanted to provide this just for some balance there. To provide a little yin and yang, to provide some, some lightness and some flow. That was a long introduction, but it's been a while since I've seen you in a session setting. So there we go. So I'm going to start with my selenite wands. I'm going to be using both. And we'll begin just clearing and cleansing your aura. Okay. So starting at the crown, I'm just going to be clearing. Kind of starting out here, clearing anything that feels held or stuck, tight or tense. And I just want to invite you to take this time to shake it off. Shake off your day. Shake off any of those thoughts that have been swimming around in your head. Just inviting you to take this time for yourself because you deserve it. To just, let's just play a little bit. These are selenite wands. Selenite is beautiful for gentle clearing. That's how I like to use it. It can be very powerful. It's very high vibrational. But it's got a really gentle energy to it. So I thought this would be nice. We're just sort of starting the flow here. We're just starting this flow. Getting things moving in your etheric fields. I think if you're open to it today or tonight, you can maybe do some dancing. Like that could be a nice way of inviting in this lighter, this ease. Get some of those juices going in your body, you know? Get things moving. That might have sounded weird, but you know, we're like mostly water. So get it flowing. When I'm feeling really heavy and depressed, if you know me, you'll know that because you'll usually find me dancing outside. I like to jam out when I'm feeling like, really heavy. I like to just jam out. My jam out song of choice is Nina Simone, Ain't Got No Got Life. What's yours? Do you have one? Your favorite, like you know it's gonna, you know it's gonna put you in the right space. Do you have one of those? And if so, what is it? And if you don't, maybe look around the comments and check out some of those songs and see if you can adopt it. You're creating a beautiful community and I love, I love bearing witness to it. It's like my pride and joy is reading the comment section. So this is gonna be a light, easy video, I hope. Here we go. Okay. So I have the two different incense that I want to use for this session. I'm going to be using this. It's like a light lavender incense and then this one is an inner child incense. So we're going to be using these to set our intention and then to kind of play and clear and get things flowing. Okay? I wanted to wait to make a video because the air has been so smoky and the air quality has been so bad here. There's ash in the air and everything. I don't mean to, I was laughing because I was thinking this is supposed to be a light video and here I go talking about these heavy things. But it's, my voice was really, really croaky. And it's slowly started to ease up. So hopefully it's not too distracting. I'm very lucky that I'm completely safe. Everyone I love is safe. So thank you for your well wishes. They really mean a lot to me. They're all good. And I'm sending you so much love as well. Okay? All right. So let's take our incense. And this isn't an inner child session. We're not working with the inner child. But I did want that vibrancy, that buoyancy, that youthful energy for this. Just to really play around with that, the kind of light vibrant energy of youth. And it can be very heavy too, but we're talking about the light side of it. So on behalf of your wisest, highest, most empowered and aligned selves in loving comfort and perfect balance, I wish to conduct this distance Reiki session for ease and flow. For inviting a lightness. Okay. And now we are going to move through and kind of clear anything that's not in service of that intention. So that intention is sealed and now we are moving through and clearing anything that's not aligned with that intention. Clearing anything heavy. Clearing anything troubling. Any of the trauma. We're just, we're not ignoring it. We're not living in denial. Just for right now, we're giving ourselves the gift of ultimate presence. And we're allowing ourselves to be in this moment, in this space. And hopefully you're sensing this gentleness that I'm trying to create for you. A gentle healing space for you to exist in right now. Because I truly believe that we need it. Okay. I wanted to make this session a little bit darker because I've received some requests from you lovelies for a little bit darker. So I'm having to play around. And yeah, we'll see. I know some of you watch this to fall asleep. It's like, some watch it to fall asleep and some are here for just a chill time and relaxation. So I thought I would try to accommodate where I can and when I can. And I thank you for your patience when I'm not able to. Okay, beautiful. I'm going to just get the back of your head here as well. Still trying to show you with my hand what I'm doing in the back. Maybe I'm going too fast. That's okay. Okay. Beautiful. So we just, with a lot of this, just want to create a really healthy flow. The idea in Reiki is that movement indicates health. And anything that feels stuck or held, tight or tense, anything that has been blocked from view, from your awareness, that hasn't been moved through in some way, that stuck, blocked energy indicates a lack of health. So you can apply this to so many things. The movement of your body, the physical, mental, emotional, spiritual planes, all I think follow this principle. From my, from my experience at least. The only permanent is change and all of that. Okay, so we're having fun here. We're just allowing ourselves to be playful. And ease. Okay. I recognize that this video might not be for everybody. That's okay. That's okay. If it's not for you, I'll see you next time. And now we have our spray. Yummy yummy spray. Little aura mist. And this yummy aura mist is jasmine and rose. I'm going to do some lid sounds here for a sec. That's nice. I love that sound. It's not for you, but that's okay. It's like one of my favorites. Oh, it's so good. So I'm going to spray this to your right. Let's thicken up your aura here. I'm going to spray this to your left. I would love to know how many of you are right-handed and how many are left-handed. Because I feel like everybody is left-handed. Which I don't know, I just think is the coolest thing ever. I'm right-handed. So maybe it's grass is always greener. Okay, down to feet. Speaking of a light energy, my puppy is just outside. She's got a great light energy. But she's been through a lot. Lost her eye to a coyote. I'm going to spray your heart center. She's been through a lot. But she finds that lightness. You know, that's kind of what I want here. Is that we choose the lightness. We choose that ease. But we, we are no stranger to the dark either. Okay, and myself, because why not? Yum. And my hands here. Okay. I have some crystals here that I'd like to do a very gentle grid. But first, to start us off, I'd like to do, to place a few stones in your hands. So I'm just going to grab them here and I'll be placing them in the palms of your hands very gently. Okay. So I have this lovely, very gentle, very smooth rose quartz. And it's a beautiful pink color. And then I have a kombaba jasper. Great for ease of transition, ease of transformation and a gentle flow. I mean, this is petrified sea algae. So this is all about flow. I mean, it is just the visual interpretation of flow. If you look at it, it just has a very fluid kind of vibe to it. So we're doing ease and flow. Ease and flow. And if you're able to just maybe even repeat that as if it's some sort of mantra. Because of the fires, a lot of the animals have been a little bit upset, a little riled up, a little on edge. So you might hear a little bit of that in the background. So just, you know, we're all here together. We're taking it easy for this session, okay? But I really like, I want to invite the sense of like, like the mystery and the curiosity. Let's like, let's pepper our practice with that. Pepper our practice with some yummy curiosity and open-mindedness. Let's release the rigidity and really give over to this like bendy water energy. This like, or you know, the tree energy. Just this really gorgeous, fluid, easy kind of vibes. It's like maybe in honor of California, what Cali does best. Like easy vibes, good vibes. That's not true. I hope that wasn't offensive, but I, you know. All the love in the world for Cali. And I know that's not the only place where these fires are. That's where I am. Okay. Gorgeous. So now I'm going to be placing these stones just in the palms of your hands. And we're inviting that energy in, swirling around and then coming out your other hand. So it's like this beautiful flow, this beautiful kind of continuation of that energy. We don't have to worry about it being any way. We don't have to worry about it feeling any particular way. We're just open to whatever comes here. Okay. Beautiful. That smells so good. It's very gentle and just smells like you're outside. It doesn't smell super perfumey. It's just very like... So we're going to start with this grid. And I'm going to begin, my hair's still a little bit wet. Let it air dry and it's a little wet. But I am going to start with this little piece of clear quartz. We're going to be placing this right at the crown of the head. So we want to place it here just to open up that connection with the divine. Get this beautiful column of energy just flowing down through your midline. Just entering in through the crown of your head, this glorious glimmering light of awareness. This is like what we spoke about. There we go. In the meditation that I just uploaded. Which thank you so much for your love over there. I really wasn't, I didn't know what to expect with that video and I felt so excited that you guys really liked it. That was awesome. So thanks. But that glimmering light of awareness, we're just bringing that in. Letting it flow. Bearing witness, you know, seeing what happens. This stuff, you know, it's so important to tap into and understand our shadows and understand the sides of ourselves that we may, that may be hidden from us or that, I can hear the frog. Ribbit, ribbit. That may be kind of hidden from us. And it's important to kind of shed light on those dark places and to do that work that feels scary and intimidating. Because I think once you have that foundation and once you've started that work, then you know, you can have these kinds of moments, part of the ebb and flow that are just sort of light and airy and feel like you are rising to the crest of the wave. I hope I'm giving that vibe right now. But it's good to kind of see both. We have space for both. And we are creating balance now by providing that which we might feel like we've been missing. An allowance to be light. An allowance to be gentle. An allowance to be free and easy with ourselves, with our practice, with where we are and the process. You know, if we're feeling like I should be doing this and this and this and this and this better, I need to be working, you know, like just for right now. We're going to leave that. We're just going to leave it for now. It's like, it's right here. You can pick it up right afterwards. But just for now, we're just going to leave that. We're just going to leave it for now. Okay, great. Next, we're going to be placing this lovely piece of howl light. The gentle howl light right at the third eye. Just to see from a gentle vantage point, from a calm, soothed space. I mean, I think if there was a stone that kind of symbolized this ease that we're talking about, it would probably be howl light for me. Just so like, it's okay, it's going to be okay. But it has an ancient kind of marble look. It reminds me of a Grecian hall or something. But it has a very kind of graceful, gentle, calming energy. So we're placing that right on the third eye and allowing that to just swoop down, travel down, move through. So now we're going to be focusing on the throat chakra. Bringing in a gentle energy there. And so I have this lovely piece of blue lace agate. And we're going to be placing this right on the throat chakra. Very gently. It's very light and soothing. And the energy there is just very, very kind of calming. Providing space in this area so that you might see things more clearly. You know, it's like, I always, I always like to think about it as gentle expression. How can I honor and stay true to myself and honor my truth and have an ease and gentleness? Now we have our jade. I think this is probably the first time I've really played around with jade, but I've had these for so long. Little jade piece that we're going to be placing right on the heart center. So jade. And in particular, what I wanted to use it for in this session. Because like most stones, they have multiple properties and you can kind of, you can kind of focus on one of the elements and one of the aspects for, you know, a grid or an altar that you're setting up. And you can play around with another one if you're working on a different. There are several different properties typically for stones. So the aspect of jade that I wanted to play around with today is that kind of prosperous energy. That, you know, that walking with ease. Yeah, like the lucky, the lucky energy there too, for sure. But more so this, um, the easy kind of side of that prosperous energy. That there's nothing about it that holds you down. It's not like pirate or that gold feeling that's like, you, with that, those resources and all of that comes responsibility. This is the other side of that. This is just like, this is light and fun and free and playful. Okay. And on it truthfully, if you're not feeling light and playful right now, and this is not it in the spot, I totally get it. You know, we're just providing a little, a little balance, a little harmony here. So this is a yellow calcite. And we're gonna be using this on our, on our solar plexus. I love using this one. It's a little bit kind of lighter side of that self-confidence and all of that. Not delving so much into combating the self-hatred, but more like arriving as our strongest, best self, looking in the mirror and just owning it. Like, I'm gonna chop my hair off and wear my warrior necklace and dance around in the yard. That's the kind of energy I'm hoping to share. Just like a fierceness that, uh, yeah, vibrant, buoyant, light. Who cares? Somehow it's gonna work out. I don't need to have the answers. I'm gonna trust all of that. So placing this right at the solar plexus there. And now we have our sunstone. And I really wanted to use this in this session. This is the energy of the sun, so vibrant, glittery and glimmering. And it's, there's an awareness of the darkness there. It has these little dark flecks. But that it's sort of like, we choose what we see. We get to dictate our own experience. And so for now, I choose the light, glimmering, romanticized version of my life. I get to choose that. And if there's judgment from others, you know what? Right now, water off a duck's back. We can go and look at that and do that deep shadow work another time. This session, this about. You know what? I don't need that. Thank you, no thank you. That's the energy that we're going for in this. Okay. I'm like petting your aura here. Moving this through. I almost feel like a lioness, like combing the hair. Not a lioness, a lion, male lion. And now placing this with all the respect in the world for your comfort and boundaries, three fingers beneath the belly button, right at your sacral there. And now I'm gonna be placing this red calcite. It's very gemmy and lovely. And I'm gonna be placing this in between your feet. And we're just gonna invite that energy to flow up. We don't want to have this too grounded. I didn't want to use any stones that are too kind of grounding. I wanted to have a real like lightness and breeziness here. But this is still a great grounding stone, still a great stone for our base, our root chakras. I'm placing this right between your feet. And then that energy is just creating this column from below. So we've matched as above, so below. Okay, great. Placing this right down there now. Beautiful. So we're gonna run through with our clear quartz cluster. And we're gonna activate and we're gonna get things moving. And we're going to move these chakras and get them really going here. And then I'm going to draw the symbols outside of your heart center, igniting that beautiful flow. Now I've had a few of you request a few more ASMR sounds. So I wanna sort of just include some random ones here and there. And if you're just here for the Reiki and the spiritual side, this is a good opportunity for kind of patience, I guess. Practicing patience. Okay. And outside of the heart sensor, about a foot from the body, I'll just be drawing the symbols here. Okay. Alright. I'm gonna draw the symbols on the palms of my hands. And then I'll begin this very gentle hands-on healing. Starting at the crown and moving down. We can let out some, some sighs here. It's a nice way of getting that energy out. Breaking up those blockages, just getting some vibrations. My whole face is vibrating. Give it a try. Little ways of tapping into that vibrational energy. Rubbing your hands together, doing that. Those little things to help remind us, right? Now I'm not gonna be placing my hands on your throat. I'm just gonna be hooking underneath your jaw and just inviting this energy to flow here. So if you come to this point and you are feeling tense or stressed in any of these areas, you can always, you know, try and move it. Try to say like move just the forehead. See if you can tap the top of the head very gently. And invite in just that lightness here. If you feel like there's something that wants to, you know, kink that wants to be worked out in the neck, just giving over to that. Heart center hovering my hands above the heart center here. Beautiful prosperous energy. Easy. Is there a way to make everything feel easier? Is there a way to remove something from your backpack, your rucksack of burdens? That can make this load, this this time for you, this journey lighter, easier, more gentle? Dara Brock talks about finding the curve of a smile. Can we find that in our heart space? I like to visualize it opening from armpit to armpit. Like, and then meeting right at my heart center. Cheshire Cat. Okay. Placing my hands now, three fingers above your belly button at the solar plexus. You are strong and capable. You are confident. You walk through the world with confidence. Great. And now the sacral, two, three fingers beneath the belly button. Just emotionally inviting in those yummy, fun, playful vibes that we want. Or just simply opening to joy. Also to creativity, to romance, perhaps. To that new, light, fun energy of romance. Not that you have to go looking for that. You can find it in books and, you know, movies and that kind of thing as well. Having your, if you have a partner or if you're looking for a partner, maybe just planting that seed as well. Okay, when, when we're in that space of blossoming romance and love and all of that, the world looks different, you know, it's, it's, uh, we see things differently. It's, uh, it's so much easier to cope with things when we have those rose-colored glasses on. So what if we were able to decide when we put them on and decide when we take them off? Just a food for thought, you know? Maybe we can just choose to put those on and have those feelings and see the world in that way, even when we're not in new love. Maybe we're in new love with an aspect of ourselves that we're discovering, uncovering, rediscovering. Okay, we're better with Teddy Cathy right now. It's okay. It's okay. Alright, so now, right at the hips. Oh, I'm hot. Excuse me. Got a little light headed there. It's part of the session. It's so pleasant. I'm just kidding. If you're ever feeling dizzy, you should stop, drink some water, ground yourself. It's not to be taken lightly if you feel dizzy. Love you guys, back to it. Placing my hands at the hips and sending this very, 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 very gentle grounding energy there. More like we are providing a protective barrier around you so that you have the freedom to play. Tapping into the root association with protection, safety. Okay. Gorgeous, gorgeous. Okay, we're gonna close with this little owl rattle. Starting at the crown and moving down. We're just going to create a really fluffy, thick, protective aura so that you can, again, move through all of these things, move in this playful way and feel protected and safe and free while you're doing it. Okay. Nice, beautiful flow here. Yummy, 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 thick aura. Okay, great. We're gonna close by spraying to your right, stealing this practice. Spraying to your left, opening ourselves up to this fun, juicy flow. Down at our feet. And above the head. Beautiful, okay. I want to thank you so, so much for joining. I'm sending you so much love and support. I know regardless of the theme, you know, there's a lot going on. I'll leave some links of resources in the description box for places where I've donated while this hurricane, hurricanes have hit. And I hope everyone's safe and okay and these wildfires, I hope you're all safe and okay. I've left some resources where I've, that I found useful, so just wanted to mention that. And just thank you. You know, a lot of the times, this light energy, a doorway into it is really gratitude. I know that sounds really cheesy, but I don't really care. It's, I, I think that it's very, very true. I mean, I'm usually pretty cheesy. Uh, and I think that's okay. Gratitude, I think, is really important, just to, to challenge yourself, to find things to be grateful for. Because they exist, you know? Even in the darkest of times throughout history, you know, people have found some, something to be grateful for and that doesn't mean that we don't fight when we need to. It doesn't mean that we don't, you know, challenge or anything, just for our own, our own peace of mind. We don't need to share it with anybody, just of our own sense of, you know, joy and lightness and ease and flow. That inviting in that practice of, I see light here, I see some joy there. How ever small it might be, that, that can really open up a door to this kind of playful energy. I hope that didn't sound too preachy, but I'm sending you all a big huge hug and till next time. Be well. And go dance.